Welcome to the March 10, 2020 regular schedule of Portland City Council meeting in the Linda Hartlott Council Chamber. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, the Lord's Prayer, and a moment of silence for those serving our country and our first responders.
... to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. We must sustain our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but to deliver us from evil.
I'd like to make the motion to appoint Roseanne Hickman Acting President for the Court.
May I have a second? The Court is called away. Dave Bealow?
Excused.
Pat Hobus?
Here.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. She just went to turn it to yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Roseanne Hickman?
Yes.
Ryan Hill?
Excused.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Jerry Trolle?
Yes.
Thank you. Will the Court please call roll? Attendents.
Pat Hobus?
See, I'm here.
Beth Gilman?
Present.
Roseanne Hickman?
Present.
Ryan Hill?
Excused.
Margaret Phillips?
Present.
Jerry Trolle?
Present.
Dave Bealow?
Excused. Counselor, before you, you have the minutes of the February 25th Council meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
As President, I move that we accept these and approve the minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Do I have a second?
One second.
Thank you, Ms. Trolle. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The Chair notes that certification has been made regarding compliance with the rules and notification of this meeting. This evening, we have a guest presentation. Tonight, we have Christine Zess. She is a partnership specialist with the 2020 Census.
Good evening, and thank you all for giving me a few minutes of time tonight. I do have some posters for you about the Census, and I'll leave them behind. There's a variety of posters that came for you today. A partnership specialist role is simply to share information and resources to try to get the word out about the importance of the Census. Although this happens every 10 years, we sometimes forget how very vitally important it is. Next. I'm sure you know the goal is to count everybody once, and only once, and in the right place. It's a little bit more than counting people, though. They're literally taking a snapshot of your community to help you formulate decisions about what your communities need for. Next. The decennial census started way back in 1790. It is part of our Constitution. Article 1, Section 2 says it is mandatory that everyone be counted. It's also mandatory that the U.S. Census Bureau keeps your personal identifiable information private, and that's by law. The data from the decennial census is used to redistribute the seats in the House of Representatives. 10 years ago, Ohio lost two seats, not so much because of our population change, but other parts of the country were growing faster, so they got the additional representation. It's also used to redistribute boundaries, congressional boundaries as well. One of the big things it does, though, is your population count determines how federal tax dollars are distributed. If you're in a community that has a large population, you'll get a larger share of this. When, very simply, when people don't respond, you do not get your fair share of those tax dollars or your representation. Across the state of Ohio, 10 years ago, the average was 78 percent response rate. Well, a gambler would tell you, you left 22 percent of the dollars on the table, and you don't want to do that. You want that, you want as many people responding as possible. We do want you to realize and share that those data are confidential, and that's protected under Title 15, Section 9 of the U.S. Code. This job for me is a one-year adventure. I am, I was retired this time last year, decided to go on this adventure. But before, the very first thing they did is I had to raise my right hand and swear for life never to reveal any personal identifiable information. I had to be fingerprinted, background checked. My husband laughed and said, "That would have been the most boring background check ever did it." But everybody who works for the Census Department goes through this. They take it extremely seriously that your information is not shared. Why do I bring that up? Because people are sometimes afraid to respond because they think we'll be identifying, and they won't be. This information that's collected cannot be shared with police, or heights, or your landlord, or anybody, cannot be shared, at least not for 72 years. And then it's released for historical purposes. That's how ancestry.com gets their information. Next. The programs supported by these federal tax dollars are over 100 different programs. You can read that for yourself. I did highlight, in red, the health departments. Certainly, we're glad that they're getting the federal dollars that they need right now to protect us. But your libraries, housing assistance, police, fire, all down the road, they all receive federal tax dollars, and that, again, are all determined by your population count. Now, there are challenges, though. This is a screenshot from a site that's open to the public. The address is found there at the bottom, census.gov/rome. Rome stands for Response Outreach Area Mapper. This, what they did is, the Census Bureau is made up of statisticians and geographers. They put their brainpower together to attempt to predict what the response rate's going to be on this coming census. You can see on the scale there, the darker the color, it's actually the worst off, because those are the predicted non-response posts. Next. So when I zoom in on that site to Ottawa County, you see a lot of different shades of green there. The darker the color, the higher or greater the number of people are who are predicted not to self-respond. In other words, they might answer the door when the census taker comes around, but we want people to respond on their own. Next. Now, what I did was, in the far-left corner, I took each of those little census trap areas. You can download this information for yourself. It's open to the public. And I inserted their low response prediction times the population. Those numbers are red with a predictive number of people who might not respond. I thought it was a little encouraging. It's over 5,000 people. Now, the Census Government, the Census Bureau does not keep track of how many dollars are distributed per person. They don't actually distribute the dollars. But trust me, it's over $1,000 per person. So if you took that 5,000 and multiplied it by, I'm sorry, 5,000, multiplied it by 1,000, times 10 years, you're talking about a large percentage of dollars that you could go missing and you need those dollars. Next. So, history tells us, and research tells us, these are the populations that are under counted, and these are the populations we need to be sure that we do encourage to respond. I'm just going to talk about the first two for you. I was very surprised to find out that children under the identified are the highest under counted population across our country. Now, although they don't know exactly why, it's probably due to the fact that our families have become very complex, financial reasons and personal reasons. A child might have to live with a grandparent, or another family member, or even a friend. And when it comes time to take the census, people who are one person per family include the census questionnaire for everyone, and they think, "Well, who's our my child?" And they're not including them in that count. What happens as a result of that is, it's another 10 years until that child can be counted. By then, the child is a teenager. They may have needed speech lessons, they may have needed special education, many number of things. The child will get those services, but there really won't be half a foot dollars there that there could have been if the child had been counted. Next. So the idea is, if we know where to look and who to look for, we ought to have a plan for improving that counter. This year, the Census is going to be just as quick and easy as it was in 2010. There are only nine questions for the person number one. They used to say the head of the household, now they say person number one, the person who fills it out. Nine questions for that person. They want to know name, age, birthday, sex, race, ethnicity, whether you own or rent your home, and your telephone number, and I'm forgetting one more, but they're really very, very basic questions. There are seven additional questions for other people who live under the same roof. But this time, for the first time, the Census is going to be available over the Internet. We've never done that before, but we've just had. It will be available in 12 different languages. People can also pick up the phone and call, and listen to the questions, the residents in 12 different languages. We can also still respond by mail, and we're really encouraging you to use the Internet. Of course, we all know the vital importance of completing the Census and for our communities in the future. So, this is a little timeline for you. You may have already noticed, there are quite a few ads on television, I'm sitting here. That's how it started. But this Thursday, the Census is going to start, we do as postal service, will start to deliver letters of invitation. And we won't well get that letter on the same day. That's simply a matter of the postal service now, they're distributing so many at a time. But I'll show you a screenshot of what that letter looks like in just a minute. But that letter will say, "You can go online right now and complete the census." Or, "You could wait, and in a few weeks, we'll send you a paper census." Or, "You can also pick up the phone and give the number, and you can call." During March, April, and May, there'll be reminders for people to please complete the census. On the last reminder, or the third reminder, if you have not completed yet, it'll say, oh, I'm sorry, it'll send you a paper census at that one. So the paper census questionnaires are not coming out until the middle of April. Again, that's to save money. It's, it's about four sheets of paper to print out the census. Of course, if they don't know how many people are in the home, they have to send you a census and up to 10 people to be counted on. You have to mail it out, get it back, and it takes a lot of money. And also, when people don't respond, and the census takers come to the door, the non-responders are paying in Ottawa County $17 a pound, plus 58 cents per gallon for a month. That all comes out of our federal tax dollars that we need, so that we get them counted. I do want to mention that you can still respond online, by phone, or by mail through the end of July, but we would like to advertise that. We want people to respond right away, like this type of phone. All the statistical data has to be to Congress by the end of the year, and that again, so that they can determine the real proportion of the seats in the House of Representatives. This is a screenshot of what that letter will look like when it comes to your phone. But underneath next week or so, you should receive one. In the box on the right, there'll be a 12-digit ID that they'd like you to use when you're online. You plug that number in, that number represents your residents. The pair of us just beneath the box say, basically, if you don't want to do it online, that's fine, just wait, we will send you a paper census, and you can pick a questionnaire, and you got that fact, we'll be fine. And the last paragraph does remind people that it is mandatory that you complete the census, and if you do not respond, then they will have to send someone to your home to interview you to get the necessary questions. This is what, this is the main site, 2020census.gov. And there is a lot of information on it. And any questions you have, they did a beautiful job of explaining things. Up on the top row, left, it says partners. I'll show you an end where there are all sorts of posters, flyers, and all sorts of things for you to promote the census. On the far right, we'll see privacy and security. If you're concerned about somebody coming to your home or getting there as a scan name, we'll tell you exactly what to do right on the desk. And the very first link on the left that says, "Get the facts." I'm going to show you something very important that's on there this Sunday. So, this Thursday, the middle of that screen will disappear, and it will look probably a little more like this. There'll be a line that says, "Start the questionnaire." And they're going to want you to plug in that 12-digit code right there. Now, if for some reason you don't get the code, right underneath there, the second red arrow, there's a link that you can click there, answer a few questions, and to verify your address, and then you can proceed through it. So people who, for whatever reason, can't find the code, never got a code, they can respond right there. So, here's some things that I want you to consider. We know we want this count to go up. So things you can do are, print posters. They can, they don't have to be as large as this, you can put them smaller. They're all available on the link that's right there, and I've left this presentation on the back computer, so you will have this. You can post messages on social media. They have prepared messages that we can copy and paste and personalize for your community. You can utilize digital signs. You can please have people apply for jobs, because we're going to still, we still need a few more people to go there and do it. The next little last one, Internet computer access. I've been working with Sandusky a little bit longer. I only recently was assigned to Ottawa County. Sandusky's going to plan, but they've already asked different places, the Boys and Girls Club, the seniors center, so on, different places that are going to offer free Internet and computer access. Not everybody has Internet and computer access, and if you want to have people to respond online, you do this. This city itself is going to take mobile tablets to supermarkets and the public areas where you might find some of that public population. This is where all those materials are, under partners. On the left, it's the outreach materials. There are hundreds of flyers, there are all sorts of things that will answer questions for people. These are just examples of the posters. They're all different varieties of posters, right, especially left one, right, piston and cup. People forget, any child born on April 1st or the 4th counts. There are four on April 2nd, eight of them count for 10 years. It's again, over 100 counted. The top left on the right, which can give you jobs, people can still find, they hire over half a million people to make this whole thing go. It's the biggest initiative that the government takes, government takes on outside of wartime This is, this is the last one, and the one that I really want to emphasize. Because it's going to be available over the Internet, there's a way, and I'll show it in a second, that if you can get that data live, you'll know how your community's doing. And if you can track your home, you can also challenge another community. You can, currently, the information from the 2010 Census is in there, but on April 1st, there's going to be live data, and you'll know how you're doing. So, there's a city in your economy, and a city in Sandusky who are going to be challenging each other, and I think you're doing more information than that, to try to read each other's response rate, and that's something you might want to do as well. On that page I showed you there is a toolkit that has all the, a screenshot of a map that's on that response to your data. And you can see at the top there, the national self-response rate in 2010 was 6.5 percent, and Ohio was with 69 percent. Take a look at those colors. Blue is good, brown is not so good. When I zoom into Ohio, I just felt so over, I saw a one color up there. You could actually zoom in even further, I did not do it here. You can zoom in to your city to see how the city did on this, on this. We want your dollars to come back to your community. My position as a partnership specialist, there were only about 800 in the whole country last year, not last year, 10 years ago. They saw Patrick Vatican, when somebody went into a community to help explain what's really going on. They hired double that number this year, and that's why I'm here. 10 years ago, you might have had somebody drop in, do you a few things, but all the resources weren't there. So, I do hope that you consider doing something to help your community increase its self-response rate. Again, I've written grants, that was part of my position. I worked for Sandusky City Schools as a teacher, later as a tech associate, which meant I had to write grants to get technology. You know how hard that is. There's also a mom that had to do bases. We're leaving money on the table, and we want those dollars to come back to you. Basically, everything you need is on 2020census.gov. You've also got my contact information. I'd be glad to answer questions now or later. Thank you very much.
And regarding to people that winter, let's just say, in another area, how, where do their numbers count? How do they get found if they're in Florida during this process?
Great question. That's the first thing I saw when I saw that brown. That's definitely, but really, Erie County has the same problem. That letter will not get forwarded to where you are. But, this year, because it's offered online, that link, if you are able to way that you can communicate with people who spend most of their year here, the rule is, you can have more than one residence. They want you to complete this for the, where you live the most number of days. Doesn't have to be unofficial residence or anything, it's a period of most days. So they can go to this online site, they can click that link, I mean, I mean, get an ID and answer a few questions, and it's as simple as that. Any other questions? And thank you very much, please.
We have one in the audience.
Yes.
Is there yard signs available, so that people could, could have?
Right. Community, you know, one of the things I presented to another group earlier today, and I was thrilled when I saw Lorraine County, no worries, it's a nice place. Lorraine did better than Erie County, and certainly did better than Sandusky, or Ottawa County as well. How did that happen? 10 years ago, they got organized, and they stay organized, and they're, they're strategizing, getting together with small groups, monocities, fountains, they're going to do the same thing in Fort Clinton. And those are the kind of groups that you can reach out to, you say, "Would you put a yard sign?" They think, the, my Census Bureau does not, they provide very little actual materials, but it's all on that outreach material, so you can print those things out yourself. There's a lot of them over there. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tonight, we have no good comment. We'll move on to executive officer reports. President and Counselor, that's me, I have nothing. The mayor is traveling, he has something.
I will go and move here.
Okay. We're like a switcheroo day.
Going almost toward the same office. Just a reminder that the official invitation for the Linda Hartlott Council Chamber is moving to date March 24th at 7:00 p.m. here. All are welcome, the public's invited. We'll be unveiling a plaque that we have for the law. We have sent some invitation about, and contacted some prior affairs, council people that have worked, that work with Mrs. Hartlott. Mrs. Hickman and I intend to host the IC dinner. Jerry was tonight, was a nice, very nice event, a lot of who we're talking about, we're seeing more of, we're supporting those awards. The Portland Easter egg hunt will be Saturday, April 4th at 10:00 a.m. at Lakeview Park. We all have some donations being done through Mrs. Hartlott for January 18th. And also, the mayor's pancakes for Perry. Fun Razor will be Wednesday, April 15th at Alphard. From 4:30 to 7:30 p.m., proceeds will go to the annual Fourth of July celebration. We'll be monitoring, if anyone sees the rest of this contact, Mayor Snyder. Our Day Celebration at Lakeview Park on Friday, April 24th at 5:00 p.m. All are welcome. Citywide playoffs will take place on Saturday, April 25th, from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. This is available for city residents only. You will have to vote if you live in the city limits or whatnot. So, a utility bill, direct license, that, anything like that will fly into another dissection. We have a draw from Washington Street, I'm sure that the schools will make sure everyone's aware of that. And also, Counselor before you, for a second reading, you have orders 3 to 20. It's a partnership agreement with the city of Portland, and Ottawa County, which is a community house of conservation in 2020. Partnership, which is also known as a chip grant, formerly as a chip grant. Mayor Snyder, an administration asset, the ordinance we passed under the second reading due to 25 requirements in the application deadline. This does not test the city anything, but provides the city with $300,000 to $40,000 for housing projects and medical assistance for the citizens of Portland. And also, I don't know if people have seen, but I believe there is still a lot of fun. A lot of people post about food.
I think that's all we're doing.
Yeah, yeah, so, a lot of traveling and everything, so, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Treasurers' report, Mrs. Hanson.
Madam Chairman, our bid taxes continue to move higher. At this point, we have $8,517.91.
Thank you. All your articles.
Thank you, Madam President. I do want to just echo what was said about the Census. The Portland population has changed since 2010, since Fort Clinton Point and Harry Glenn came into the city of Fort Clinton. A lot of the people who reside there have children, and we need to get the word out to make sure everybody gets counted. Members of council, you can talk to your boards, you can try to get the word out. It's very important this year, because we really need to get everybody counted. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
I'm sure that Mayor Snyder would like to have Portland versus Oklahoma. So I'm sure that we'll be going along with that, we'll let everyone know.
As always, our chair and manager. Supervisors' report, Safety Services Director calls in.
Just a reminder, cemetery cleanup, we will start cleaning up on March 16th. You can put legal items back on on March 21st. Obviously, that's Monday, weather permitting. Might take us a day or two, depending on weather. Mrs. Sardi talked about the cleanup and Easter egg hunt, so you guys are all aware of that. Open gym, open swim is over. Room crowds for most of the time. Couple of issues we had, we have here that they were taking care of, and I appreciate the schools and everything letting us be involved with that. Work has begun on Jefferson Street. They're going to be starting south of Perry, that's their beginning point for right now, so sure you know the route that way towards the railroad. Also, just to throw out there, I'll get more information on this one, me. Gary Steyer approached me, and they're going to have, the school's going to have a community work for May 11th, all the high schools that come out, we clean up downtown, clean up whatever things I talk to him about and other things that they're going to do in the city. So I'll get more information on that, I'm not even going to interrupt first. But just to throw that out there, if you have any ideas of things you think, if you can set some kids in you, please contact me or email me, just tell me, and I'll take it to you with the meeting. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. To Hickman.
Nothing denied, Madam President.
We will move on to committee reports. Finance, Mr. Bealow is excused this evening. Environment and Public Works, our next meeting will be March 24th at 6:30 p.m. in the council meeting room. Safety Services, Ms. Phillips.
Thank you, Madam Assistant. I've got to get a hold right here. You're all right here. At our meeting earlier this evening, all three of us council members voted that at the third reading, this time around, that we were going to recommend that, um, the slow speed ordinance we looked at was 4-20.
Under speed or slow speed?
Uh, well, and what was the speed?
Under speed.
Under speed. We talked about slow speed, but this one is what's the speed.
Under speed.
Thank you, Madam President. I think I'll do what you said.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Uh, good night to development, again, Mr. Velo is excused, arts and culture.
Our next meeting, thank you, Madam President. Our next meeting is, uh, March 24th at 11:00 p.m.
Thank you. Uh, council before you, we have correspondence, uh, the Ohio EPA sanitary survey partial resolution of violation dated February 24th, 2020. We have a thank you card from the family of Colleen Hunsinger, and a month-end report February 2020 from Mr. Athfield, Edgewood Manor Rehabilitation and Healthcare Center opening hours. Do I have a motion to approve the court's findings as stated?
I'll make the motion. May I?
No, second. We have a motion by Mr. Trolley, seconded by Ms. Phillips. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. We have more third readings of ordinance resolutions, so we will move on to second readings of ordinance resolution. Will the court, court please read by title and summary only Ordinance 1-20?
Ordinance 1-20, an ordinance making appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Portland, County of Ottawa, State of Ohio during fiscal year ending of December 31st, 2020.
Does council wish to take any action on Ordinance 1-20? Hearing none, Ordinance 1-20 will be moved to its third reading on March 24th, 2020. Will the clerk please read by title and summary only Ordinance 2-20?
Ordinance number 2-20, an ordinance to approve 20, to approve 2020 replacement pages to the Portland certified ordinances and declaring an emergency.
Does council wish to take any action on Ordinance 2-20? Hearing none, Ordinance 2-20 shall be moved to its third reading on March 24th, 2020. Will the clerk please read by title and summary only Ordinance 3-20?
Ordinance 3-20, an ordinance to approve the community housing impact and preservation 2020 partnership agreement between the city of Portland and Ottawa County, and to authorize and direct the Director of Safety and Service to execute the agreement and declaring an emergency.
Does council wish to take any action on Ordinance 3-20?
Madam President, I move we retain, I'm sorry, I move we waive the three required readings of Ordinance 3-20.
I have a motion to retain, to waive the three required, reduce, an ordinance 3-20. Do I have a second?
I have a second, then. Madam President, may I, um, defer to the law director? I think with two, uh, individuals, council members missing, I don't believe you are able to have enough votes to waive the required three readings.
Is, they ask, Ms. Higman, is a council member still as she's acting, President Rocha? Is that correct?
That's correct. You have Mr. Velo and Mr. Hill.
Correct, and we need five members for emergency clause, correct?
Um, there's, yeah, the emergency clause, and then the waiving of the readings. I thought they require the waiving of the readings.
I, I think it's a single, I could be wrong, though. I, I asked them to check, because I think it's five, I'm pretty sure it's five, but I could be completely incorrect.
I believe it's five as well. I do too, for both. The only concern for this is that, um, if we can lose that opportunity, um, if we do not vote on it, um, I do believe it's five. I don't know if anyone has any different opinion that they know, I know, we're, we're looking at it right now.
Maybe, maybe the emergency clause is one of those two that cannot be yet.
Majority, oral, is four members. So, yes.
So, it states here, um, three fourths affirmative vote of all members elected to council, or six votes, shall be required to suspend the rules for the reading of legislation on three separate days. The wording of a motion to suspend the rule shall be as follows. I move to waive the three required readings of ordinance, and you, whatever number that is. The motion is to be seconded and followed by a roll call vote. This motion is followed by a motion to adopt or such other motion as may be appropriate.
So, it said you need six members, right?
Three, no, three fourths affirmative, or six votes.
Or six votes.
So, you're pressed, right, so he is pressed.
You don't have six votes. You have five.
Okay.
Okay. Can we call a special? Call a special meeting, will we have enough votes?
We have enough attendance, people to attend. So, we will work on getting a date for that.
What is this on the due date then?
Yeah, we're gonna start due date.
The 24th?
The 24th, I think they, they have had it dated.
Well, I need it to, if I may, um, I need to get it to Ottawa County Regional Planning to mess up, so we can finish the applications, so the law stays before our actual deadline.
So, it's in the process.
Yeah, we agree with it. No. Okay.
There is a motion on the floor, so, and draw my motion, I'm not sure.
Yes, draw your motion. We don't need, do we need to make a motion to table it?
Yes.
No, because we're not.
Have it read in the special meeting.
We'll move it to the third reading.
Yeah.
Third reading.
Okay. Um, ordinance 3-20 will be moved to its third reading and a special meeting that will be called, um, and publicized. Okay? Will the clerk please read by title and summary only Ordinance 4-20?
Ordinance number 4-20, an ordinance enacting Chapter 377 of the certified ordinances of the city of Portland entitled "Under Speed Vehicles," prohibiting, prohibiting the use of under speed vehicles, utility vehicles, and mini trucks upon any street or highway in the city of Portland and declaring an emergency.
Does council wish to take any action on Ordinance 4-20? Hearing none, Ordinance 4-20 shall be moved to its third reading on March 24th, 2020. We will now move on to first readings of, first reading of ordinances and resolution. Will the clerk please read by title and summary only Ordinance 5-20?
Ordinance 5-20, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Safety and Service to enter to a dockage and wharf agreement with the Sassy Sales Charter Service Incorporated and declaring an emergency.
Does council wish to take any action on Ordinance 5-20? Hearing none, Ordinance 5-20 shall be moved to its second reading on March 24th, 2020. We will now move on to business from the floor. Ms. Phillips.
Thank you. I also went to the 2020 Business and Industry Awards, which is out of Kefka. It's a very nice showing of all the things that can go on in Ohio County, which, you know, you don't think about them unless you go there and meet all these different people. They had, not only on the county, they also had a fellow from Cleveland, who was a Federal Reserve, explained a good bit of the work involved, very heavy stuff, but people paid attention. Definitely worth the speaking, never had a chance to go. Definitely a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Mr. Trolley.
Um, just, just one quick question. Mr. Goldson, any word on the wetlands?
Um, they said they'd be here, we put the next call.
Good. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Trolley. Ms. Gilman.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to thank the Burning Snowman crew, the volunteers that put it together, and all the people that worked on it. Brought a lot of people into our town, the streets were full, um, they raised quite a bit of money for this little project, so, and our police have hired every job of them.
Thank you. Ms. Phillips.
Good night, Madam President.
Thank you. Um, I, I will reiterate what Ms. Gilman said about the Burning Snowman. Um, they, the committee stated that they believe they had a thousand more people there this year than last year. I think it was an excellent idea to move it, um, into Waterworks Park and host the event there. And I know, um, Ms. Gilman talked to several people who were from all, all over the state of Ohio. So, our hotels were full, our restaurants were full, um, it was truly a nice little jolt for our economy here, and, uh, it was nice to see the community embrace this, and, uh, I think they look forward to hosting it again, if the city will allow them next year, and I only can see this event growing and being something, um, nice for our community in the future. And that is it. Um, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Madam President, I move to establish by adjourn.
One second.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor.